They had family visiting that weekend.
Okay. Sorry, my clock says six. Good to go. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meetings. Meeting commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
A motion to adopt the final agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next order of business then is to adopt the minutes from our July one, two thousand twenty-five planning commission meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the July first, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Aaron, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We'll now move on to our discussion items. The first item for discussion is item three point one, which is to discuss the proposed R one A Old Town Residential zoning district. I'll now turn it over to associate planner Travis Brearley for a staff presentation.
Evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight we are looking at a potential zoning district known as Old Town Residential, which would be a subset of our R one zoning. This request is, or what we're looking at, the background on it is based on a request that we recently had for an amendment to the R one standards, which was recommended by denial by the planning commission and subsequently denied by city council. A result of that is to look for ways that we can still spur infill and redevelopment within the community. So the staff was directed by the city council to explore their options and as a result, R one A has been formed. The process for this is we're going to review the language that's been prepared with the planning commission to get feedback. We'll take that feedback. We'll do some updates to the ordinance based on that feedback and present it to the city council. The city council will provide feedback for staff and then we will go ahead and schedule a public hearing so we can get feedback from the community. So there's no decisions to be made tonight, just feedback for staff, comments, questions, concerns. The whole idea is that by October, we can have a determination made by the city council whether the zoning district should go forward, what it should look like, or if it should be denied. Just a little bit of history on the area that we're looking at. It is south of Highway five, along Victoria Drive, going to the east and the west. You'll see on the screen, you'll see outlines of everything in red. That's the primary area that we're looking at because those are our more historic districts. If you ever look at aerial photos from the twenties and the thirties and even the forties, most of the homes that you see in those aerial photos are going to be inside that green box that's in the center toward the top. So you'll notice that a lot of these are nineteen fourteen, nineteen forties, fifties, sixties, going into that era. So some of these have been plotted before Victoria was a city. Another way to look at it is we take that information, we break it down to our examination area we're looking at. That's everything that's highlighted in purple on the screen. You'll notice that where those striped lines are, those properties have P U Ds with them, so they have other allowances. The affected parcels for what we're looking at are on the screen. You'll notice that it's almost the same, except that there's two parcels that we're looking at. One is on the north along Kwama Quin, which is a multifamily housing and that does not fit within our R one code. So that'd be better suited to be with our central business district. And also to the south side of that, along Fatunia, you have a property where it's an R two with a question mark. The reason there's a question mark is because we're just confirming some legality stuff, as well as working with the property owner to figure out the best definition, if it should be an R two, R three, and then what capabilities that the city does have in moving forward with that. Both the property owners in this case, I've been able to get in contact with to get their feedback, to see if this is something that they would support, not support, so on and so forth. At the end of the day, the zoning of properties within the city is guided by the planning commission, ultimately approved by the city council.
Travis, what's in that orange box today?
It is a duplex, which is, which is, would be a legal non-conforming status for the R one zoning.
Got it.
The R one A would allow for duplexes. The biggest difference that would come in the future with this would be the amount of impervious cover. Because of the size of the site and improvements that the property owner's been requesting, it comes down to figuring out what best suits and what has the least impact or least adverse impact on the neighborhood, if any, as well as allowing the property to flourish as much as possible. So it's a balancing act with everything. The true affected area is the area shown on screen. On the left side, especially west of County Road eleven, you'll see that there's a bunch of blue dots and a blue line. All those properties, that represents our shoreline overlay district. So those properties are within a thousand feet of the watermarks of the body. There's the proposed language that you'll see in the future will have an effect on those properties to only allow for potential shrinkage and setbacks, but not lot size, lot width, and those type of criteria. To the, to the other side, it's a little bit different. You'll see that we have two parcels in green. Those can, would have the maximum amount of effect by an R one district, allowing those properties to subdivide completely without having any type of significant restrictions. The property that's in the center is along Victoria Drive that's highlighted in blue. That property there has shoreline that partially goes through it. So it will only be slightly affected to where the shoreline ordinance only affects the portion that covers the property and that's primarily going to be with the twenty-five percent impervious cover. The two properties that you see that are highlighted in red on the left, those properties are large enough, which underneath the ordinance, underneath the proposed language would be able to be split. However, because they're in shoreline, they couldn't be subdivided. So just to point out the maximum number of properties that'd be affected by this. So while we're looking at everything with the R one-
Travis, can you go back and say that one more time? Sorry.
All right. So the red properties are large enough where underneath the proposed language and the R one A would be able to be subdivided into two parcels. However, being with inside the shoreline overlay, they would not be able to do that because they wouldn't meet the shoreline overlay requirements.
Okay. And the blue and green ones?
The blue parcel is partially affected by the shoreline overlay to where they would only be affected in that small area on impervious cover restrictions. And we did confirm that with the, with the D and R that that's how they want their rules interpreted. The parcels that are highlighted in green, those parcels would be able to be subdivided and take full advantage of an R one A zoning as far as our bulk standards go.
So the one on, in blue, the blue box?
Right in the center.
Right in the center. Is that eighty-one oh one that we talked about earlier?
Correct. That's eighteen oh one, yep.
I'm sorry, eighteen oh one?
That's the one we talked about. There is a proposal that was brought forward to the city several months ago to do a subdivision. And that's when the recommendation came forward from staff that the only way to make that possible was to request an amendment to the R one zoning standards, which we looked at and were denied. So this is a way to take that and shrink it down to more specified area and look at an actual certain type of housing stock that the community does have. Instead of affecting all the housing stock, we can narrow it down to help with that redevelopment. Many of the homes here were built between the nineteen twenties and nineteen eighties.
So eighteen oh one would not be divided into two?
It would be able to be divided into two underneath the proposed zoning regulations, which we'll get to.
Okay, thank you.
So just a quick overview of what we want to do. The intent of the R one A zoning is to take our R one standard and allow for a little bit of flexibility. Nothing that changes the characteristics of the neighborhood, nothing that changes the characteristics of the community as a whole. We're looking for slightly smaller lot sizes, smaller front and rear setbacks. It's been pointed out that our side yard setback is something that we've gotten some pushback on at staff to keep alone, so don't, haven't changed, just the front and the rear. It also allows for a more varied type of housing stock that we have. Homes can be taken down and rebuilt. So a home from like nineteen thirty, you might demolish and put it in a brand new home. It might make financial sense, it might not make financial sense to a developer, to a private property owner to do so. So we looked at doing other things such as twin homes or duplexes. The main difference between a twin home and a duplex, a duplex has two residential units with inside one structure. Twin homes are two single-family homes that are joined by a single wall. So the other thing that we looked at was the effect of the comprehensive plans and we talked to the Met Council about it. The Met Council doesn't see any changes that we need to do to our current comp plan, which is the twenty forty comprehensive plan. However, when we start going through our twenty fifty comprehensive plan, we'll need to add the R one A as a zoning district, but we won't have to change the land use designation for that single family because we can allow for that single family to have a little broader definition such as we currently do. We also looked at the shoreline ordinance, asked the D and R, what's the possibility for getting some leniency or any type of variance to the regulations in this area? They came out with the resounding, resounding no, nothing will change. Requested it'll get denied, so we're not even going to consider that type of option for this area. Mainly because we can't have one area of the community where the shoreline ordinances are one way and then the rest of the community has to have it another. It's not a fair application of any type of regulations. We want, we want to keep everything fair and transparent. So just a reminder where we're at. Like I said, the, the true effect, we have different parcels in there. The shoreline on the west, non-shoreland parcels on the right. I don't know why that, why that doubled. That was weird. Anyways, so just comparing the bulk standards between the R one and the R one A. The R one you'll see is labeled in the blue, where we have twelve thousand square foot minimum lot size, eighty for the width, hundred and thirty for the depth, and we have a front and rear setback of thirty feet. So those are the main things that we would be looking at for the comparisons on it. As far as the side yard setbacks, that stays at ten feet, impervious cover stays at thirty-five, maximum height stays at thirty-five feet. With the R one A, we'd be looking at going to a smaller property size, which would allow an increase in density. But it allows for that smaller property to go to ninety-one hundred square feet. We would be looking at corner properties at seventy-five and then the interior properties at sixty-five. This still allows property or homes to be built that can fit onto parcels, don't cause obstructions, and still fit within the character of the neighborhood. Looking for your lot depth, a hundred and ten feet, that's just because of some math, that it's a hundred and ten feet. Most of the parcels with inside the, the area that we're looking at are between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and sixty feet in depth. So a hundred and ten feet, that's hardly being met and you wouldn't be able to split any of the parcels to have that really be an issue. Front yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks, taking five feet off and making those to twenty-five feet. That's mainly because of the size of the parcels. When examining the area and looking at the, at the historical plots and where homes were built, we see homes being built anywhere between about that twenty-five foot mark and about forty feet, depending on what area you're looking at. If it was done in the nineteen teens, nineteen forties, nineteen seventies. So there is a variety there. By shrinking that distance, you're going to allow for property or homes to fit on those smaller parcels evenly. And you can still have a larger home, but it would be similar to the type of housing stock that already exists, not to the type of housing stock that we're building with C Lennar or M I or- We're also looking at introducing the twin homes in there.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Question, why the large discrepancy in the lot size between a twin and a duplex? To me, they're close to the same product. I mean, a duplex can be either side by side or stacked, whereas a twin home is basically side by side, correct?
So Commissioner, that's an excellent question. Let me answer that for you. Twin home is considered two individual residential dwellings. They're, so they're considered separate buildings.
Yeah, but they're-
A duplex is considered a single building with inside it has two residential units. So with twin homes, each home, you'd look at as a single family home on its own parcel. As where duplex, you have one parcel and that's where the change goes for the density requirements is the difference from, you're going to have two residential units on a single parcel. So if you make that parcel smaller, you can have a higher density compared to, excuse me, if you make the parcel larger, you'll have the same density as a twin home that has two parcels.
Basically, the twin home, if there's twin home A, twin home B that are joined, A has to have seventy-two sixty minimum, B has to have seventy-two sixty. They add together to make the fourteen, five hundred as a duplex.
Right. And then if it's a duplex, it would be just one larger parcel instead of two smaller parcels with the same amount of residential units of two.
I didn't get that either. That's a good question.
Yeah, it's a super good question. I didn't understand that.
That's more for like when we look at the map, that's going to apply more to the, was it the green?
Yeah, if we, if we take a look, so let's take, let's take an example of the center green parcel, highlighted parcel here. Currently, there's a single family home on the parcel. If the, if the parcel was to be split and they want to do two twin, or they want to do twin homes on it, you would need two parcels, so each twin home is on a parcel. However, if they wanted to redevelop it into a duplex or take the current single family and create a duplex out of it, then you would have to meet that higher standard of the fourteen and a half thousand square feet for the parcel size. It goes, it goes back to the calculation of densities and making sure densities are comparable for your residential equivalencies.
Okay.
So, and that's one of the things in here with like a twin home, because it has to have an adjoining wall between them. Twin homes are usually, they, they're on separate parcels, so they'll never be stacked. They'll be next to each other. It would have ten feet on the non-adjointing sides, you still have that side or setback, but they would be touching each other with the common wall. Duplex, you could build vertically on top of each other. There's some specific rules that go into that, but those are more building code questions, which I'm not as prepared to answer as I'd like to be.
Okay, thank you.
One question on that map too. The R three that's designated, is that, so that's currently?
That's existing, yes, Commissioner.
Existing R three.
Correct. That property is currently a fourplex. So the, the R three parcel that's listed on here in the parcel of the north that we're looking at, potentially looking at what zoning would fit best for, they're owned by the same individual. So one's a fourplex, one's a duplex, and the property owners looking at making some improvements to the site, especially with parking, storage, and things like that. So we, we want to take a look at what options are available to find that, find a good balance and something that'd be good for the community and not negative for the neighborhood. When we're looking at principal uses, like I said, we want to stick with the R one type of uses. So the only real difference between this is, is that the R one A would allow for twin homes as well as duplexes. Else, everything else is the same. For the garages and accessory structures, a lot of things on here, but basically what we did is we're using more modern language to meet the same intent and the same goals that we see in our current zoning code, as well as looking at some of the comments we received. So just to highlight a couple of things, you can't have an accessory structure that's going to be greater than the, than the principal use. So you can't build a one-story home and then put a two-story garage on the same property. It, the, the principal structure, the, the home, residential piece of it, should be the focus of a residential property in the opinion of staff, so therefore this rule comes into play. The total footprint of garage space, whether it's attached or not, and, and accessory structures and whatnot, should be no larger than the footprint of the principal structure with a maximum footprint of two thousand square feet. Getting up to two thousand square feet would be fairly difficult with the property sizes that can be allowed based on your percentages. If you're looking at thirty-five percent of a ninety-one hundred square foot lot, you're looking at about three thousand square feet or about thirty-five hundred, or about, what is it, thirty-six hundred square feet worth of impervious. It's hard to get to. But the idea behind that type of language is yet again to keep the primary focus of the property, the residential property or residential use piece, not the garage piece. So we're, this is trying to encourage single-family dwellings with families, not with single-family dwellings that have a garage that has fifteen cars in it. To help with that type of stuff. The other thing that we looked at is metal cover storage buildings and pole buildings. Metal storage building isn't, isn't a metal, just a metal roof. It's the full metal all the way around. Metal roofs are still permitted. Keeping that out, that's more of an agricultural use. And it, there's no way you're going to get that type of building to match the type of home if you build it over two hundred square feet. Sticking with the same thing that we have, no more than two accessory buildings. So you'd have one attached and one detached structure, but no more than two accessory structures. So you'd have two detached garages or detached garage, detached shed, or attached garage, detached shed. So you can have that, but it limits it. So again, this is all focused back at residential use. That's what, that's what we should be looking at when we drive down the street. We still have the rule in here about the two hundred feet or greater, still requires that you have comparable or compatible and similar type of design. So if you have a blue house with lap siding, you shouldn't be putting in a shed with stocko siding. It should go back to lap or you should make them the same. If a building or accessory buildings attached to the main buildings, so like say an attached garage, has to meet the required or the setback requirements of the principal structure. That's currently how we operate in the current code. Garage doors was something that we looked at, setting a maximum height of ten feet. Generally, there's, for residential vehicle, what you're going to be driving on your day to day, there shouldn't really be a reason to go above ten feet unless you have a boat, then you might need to go above ten feet. But in that case, that would require a large garage and could distract from the single-family use. That type of language is common in other codes, not so much in the western part of the cities, but throughout different part of the cities, we were able to see it as well as talking with other individuals. But it's a way to keep that large garage from happening. Also making sure that, that we have the rule in here that specifically states that land can't be subdivided to where an accessory structure is the, is the principal use of it. So if you have a detached garage, you can't split the property, say, well, the home's over here and the garage is on this parcel. You would have to raise the garage in order to split, or you'd have to make the split go around it. This is language that we talked about in, in previous code review, about making sure that when we do a split, it's, it is conforming at the end of the split. Right now, we don't have that language in our current code, so this is a way just to kind of get that in there now. Yes, Commissioner?
What, where'd you come up with the ten feet? Because I think most of the neighborhoods are probably eight at a max?
Correct.
So why would we put a ten on the R one A on what's going to be smaller buildings and duplexes?
So Commissioner, at this point, we don't have a restriction on garage heights as far as the opening goes. We have some newer homes, some of the carriage homes have ten and twelve-foot garages.
Carriage homes, but not small homes down there?
Not, not small homes, not for this type of area. The area that we're looking at has, they're significantly more affordable than what we have in new development. You have a lot of the homes in the area, they're valued anywhere between two hundred and eighty and four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars compared to the new residential homes that we look at. Say a Lennar product comes in, you're looking at eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars to fit our market. If you put in an eight hundred thousand dollar home next to a three hundred thousand dollar home, it's going to be out of place a little bit and it's going to take decades to find a way to get the neighborhood to transition over. This makes it so that you can still build new and you can still have that creative design, but you're sticking with the theme of it is an older part of the community, it's the historic part of our community. But eight, eight foot is, is a pretty standard going back to your, your-
I don't know what, what you would have, you'd have to have like a pretty large-
You have a lifted truck, you might need ten feet, but ten foot, ten foot was the max that, that we looked at. I talked with the, the building official about different sized garages that comes into play. And he says typically they see between eight and ten feet for the garage height. But anything bigger than that, you're starting to get into another realm of a type of garage that you need first.
Yeah, the question is if you're trying to restrict something, restrict it. Don't leave it.
This is really just for the R one A. It's not for all codes in general. This is just this section, right?
Just R one A and at the end of, and at the commission, I'm more than happy to, to note that there's a sense to move it to eight foot. That'd be fine.
I'm just asking because I don't, I don't know any, any, I mean, I know there's a couple like bigger pads that have like maybe a ten or whatever for vans to go in or RVs or that kind of thing. And RVs can't fit in ten.
So Travis, let me just understand, in the meeting materials, there was a detailed section on garages and accessory structures?
Correct.
Which I thought were useful. Are we talking now, are we going to talk about more generally or just about R one A today?
So we're, this is just about the R one A. So one of the things, because we do have two things going and some, there's some overlap.
Yep.
We're looking at the R one A tonight, we're looking at comparison to our current code. What we currently have for our language. What we'll talk about next, that is proposed future language. So there will need to be some adjustments based on the R one A. There'll be some things that may overlap that we'll look at at that time and the staff will, will get squared away before we do any type of pump here or whatnot. But for this, for the purposes of the R one A conversation, the conversation on a full code review doesn't exist.
Okay, all right.
So, um, and that, and that's where, that's where letter I kind of comes into play, is we don't have that language, so now we can put that language in and we can make sure that if there is redevelopment and infill housing, that type of stuff, it's done in a more appropriate fashion. And then later on next year, when we start looking at doing actual approvals on an update to the entire city code, that language is already in place. The other thing that, that we want to look at that we don't currently have is that an accessory building in no time should be used as a habitable space, nor can an accessory structure in a residential district be used at any time for commercial or industrial use, except for the accessory dwelling, which then becomes a habitable space at that point. But the main purpose behind that is if you're running a, a business out of your home, that you're not using your garage to run your business out of, and at-home business is supposed to be within the home. And we'll, we'll be discussing the, the home occupation stuff in, in a future meeting, just to point out. But that's the intent behind that. The other thing we looked at is shipping containers or your inter-module container. Basically, if you're moving into a property, set it on the property, set it in the driveway, what have you, it, in two days, you gotta, you'd have to get rid of it.
So does that apply to like those pods that you see?
It would apply to the pods and all that type of stuff. Now, one of the things we look at and we say forty-eight hours, you have, you have to get rid of it. Well, this, it's a zoning code. So the enforcement piece of it is let's say somebody has it there and they need it, they dropped off on Thursday and it's not getting picked up till Monday. By the time that staff gets a chance to go out there, investigate, take the pictures, send the letter, it's already going to be gone. So there is some flexibility in there. That's an inherent ability of being able to enforce our code.
Can they apply for a permit to have something longer?
We do have, we're working as staff at looking at our right-of-way and right-of-way obstructions.
Okay.
And that's how we come forward. Now, this is all going to take time. I just want to-
Yeah.
Point that out, but that is something that we're looking at is how can we better manage our right-of-ways? So if you do have a pod container and you want, and you want to put it in the street, right now, it's more or less let us know when you want to do it and where it's going to be, when it's coming, when it's being picked up. Some safety items get put on there and then we send an email back saying okay, or we deny it. So what we're looking at doing as staff is actually creating a more formal process. So that would go back to this. The intention behind this type of language is to prevent individuals from getting a shipping container, plopping it down in their backyard and saying, well, that's my shed. That, that's the intention behind it.
Does this impact construction, use of a, like a shipping container for the tool storage?
If, if a property's under construction, there's certainly ways that are given underneath the building permit. If it's being used for a constructive purpose, then it's fine. It'd be like if you have pallets of roofing and they're out in the front yard, will they not be screened? Things like that. That could be violation of the code. But you're actively building a home, you have a permit to have that type of exception. The property's supposed to be, it's supposed to be maintained and controlled, but it does exist.
So we don't have any provision for accessory dwelling units in people's backyards?
Accessory, accessory dwelling units underneath the current code requires a conditional use permit.
Okay.
That's all that the current code says. When we're looking at conditional uses in the proposed language, we have accessory dwelling units, then we have a couple items, just a small checklist of what would need to be done, such as it's counted part of the principal structure if it's attached to it, so it can count towards the footprint. If you're looking at a detached one, it needs to meet the set- Um, if you're looking at a detached one, it needs to meet the setbacks and of the accessory structure. So it could still be a habitable ADU, but now it means the accessory structure is detached because they're generally smaller. And then ta- and with that, that footprint would count against the total number of accessory structures as well as the size of accessory structures. Um, and then we looked at the off-street parking requirements. We would require one more parking stall um, to be there. And that limits the amount of on-street parking that may be required, um, depending on the type of residence. I grew up in a larger family. Said we could only park two cars in the driveway. We'd have to park them out on a county road and that wouldn't, that wouldn't go well. So, um, we do take those type of things into consideration when we're looking at this. Uh, the other thing we'd be looking at is daycare facilities. Um, conditional use permit for that. Uh, that, so that's play equipment, being in the rear yard, not an easement. Um, and parking should be prohibited on the, uh, right of way for employees. Um, that's different type of stuff we looked at when we went through uses last year. And uh, principal and accessory uses within our residential districts as well as in our commercial districts.
So they're treated actually completely separately from the accessories space defined in section four?
In, in a way.
In a way.
So uh, with a conditional use, it's a permitted use, but the city has the right to put conditions on. When we list certain things out in the code, those are mandatory conditions that cannot be altered. So those would be things where you wouldn't be able to go in and say, I'm applying for an, an ADU to go in my backyard, but no, I, I want it bigger than what the code allows for accessory structures. You wouldn't be able to get that. You'd still be restricted down to that size. Everyth- and that goes back to everything is written in such a way where the primary focus of the resident property should be the residents, not anything that's accompanying the resident's stuff. And an ADU is separate from a duplex as well when it comes down to the definitions. As far as access goes, uh, it's a little bit different. Duplexes, you can have a split entry for a duplex. You can have two entries for a duplex. ADUs have completely separate entries. Um, and sometimes there are connecting walls with doors between it. And sometimes with duplexes, you don't have that. So uh, there's some minor details which separate the two and then also affected with building code. So a couple of things for discussion tonight. So that's just the highlights. That's not every piece of information that's within the code. Um, but I do wanna point out that there is a red line in there. And basically the overall idea is that we highlight the change or some of the significant changes, some of the policy decisions that come with, uh, created in R one O and, and using a modernized language and modernized structure for it. Now, as everything else fits with inside the current R one regulations. So for discussion tonight, uh, staff would like feedback from the planning commission on the front rear setbacks being reduced from fi- by five feet from the R one standard. So from thirty feet to twenty-five. Uh, the lot sizes, the width, the depths reductions from the R one standards as well. And any questions that may exist with that. And then allowing duplexes and twin homes um, with inside this area and how that might affect the community. These aren't apartments. They'd be more, no more than two dwelling units that could be on there. Um, and then as well as the accessory building standards, especially with uh, the footprint size uh, changing instead of looking at nine hundred square feet for a permitted accessory dwell- or accessory building, looking at, it can't be bigger than the home. Uh, so that type of information, uh, so staff is looking for feedback. And with that, I appreciate any feedback or questions.
I have a, I don't know if philosophical is the right word, but just a bigger picture question of, I wanna, if you can clarify Travis, this R one A is only gonna be for downtown?
It is only gonna be for the area highlighted in gold. So we're talking the other side of highway five.
So, this passes, six months go by, a resident not in this area wants to rezone their, their home. Would they be permitted to, to submit an application to rezone their home, their lot to R one A?
Commissioner, it depends. Um, if the property would be adjacent, so let's say it's out in, uh, so we look, we got um, Katie Hills, uh, third edition was, or Katie Hills and Katie's third edition was done in nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-eight. If it was one of those properties that would be adjacent to the R one A, then that's something the city would be able to consider. Why? Let's say it's on the east side of the street instead of the west side. So it's not adjacent. At that point, we wouldn't be able to do it because that would be considered spot zoning. So they would have to be adjacent to this, uh, to the R one A.
Okay. So individual property owners couldn't, but let's say then, uh, the next developer comes in and says, we wanna plot this chunk of this new development, just use Lennar as an example. They come back and they say, we want us to plot most of this as R one A. Are they gonna be able to do that?
So all zoning decisions, especially what the designation is, is something that the planning commission reviews on an application. The city council has the final determination on it. It's one of the few powers where the city can go in and say, this is what it's gonna be. And that's it. And it's just, it's done. There's no appeal on it or anything like that. That's just, that's a right that the city has.
Okay. Uh, no, that, that's very helpful. I just wanted to like understand if that's like how this is working. And then my second follow-up to that again is, so part of this discussion has been, we keep doing all these PUDs and like skirting R one. How much of the rest of the de- of the developed areas fall within the proposed R one A lot sizes, et cetera? Like thi- and maybe not all of the city, but of the recent PUDs that have come in, how many of them fit within the R one A? Has that exercise been done?
We, Commissioner, we did take a look at that, uh, before when we were examining the R one. Uh, it's with that. Um, we, I'd have to go back to the previous presentation that I gave a, a month ago on it, uh, to, to remember for sure. But we, we did take a look at that and look at average sizes between it as well as comparable zoning in other communities and things like that. Ultimately with this, with the R one A being proposed for where it is and its limitation and scope. If a PUD comes in and there's, or if a developer, Lennar comes in and says, hey, we wanna be R one A for our zoning. The planning commission can recommend no, and the city council can be like, no. And then they have to still go through the same processes.
Yeah, I'm thinking less of limiting and more of enabling. Um.
Or the city, well, the city council could also say yes to it and the planning commission could, could do that. But the intention of the R one A zoning that is set up is specific to our older part or one of our oldest parts of the community and our most historic area. And that's in the direction that's been provided is to focus it within this area. So I don't believe underneath the current uh, political structure that we would see that happen. But I could always be wrong with that because I don't make that determination.
Yeah, I mean, if you go back to the table, like as I looked at that table, I, I could be wrong. Someone else might have a better memory. All the R one A, single family look very similar to all the recent PUDs we have approved. And so if I'm a developer, I'm gonna come in and say, hey, well, zone this is, if you, if I rezone this as R one A, I don't have to go through the whole PUD rigmarole and a whole bunch of, you know, stuff. I, I don't know if that's a fa- if that's the case. I just, I just wanna make sure we're thinking like the bigger picture of like, yeah, how is this gonna affect the rest of the development, especially south growth that's happening? And if it's not R one A, is there, maybe this is part of the comp plan is to figure out what's the in-between R one and R one A?
Commissioner, that, that's an excellent point. Uh, one thing I'd like to point out is that the parcels that are being developed are not within the corporate limits of the city of Victoria. So they're actually in Lake Town Township. When those parcels are brought or annexed into the city by ordinance, we actually annex those in as an agricultural property. It has an extremely low density because they're greater than ten acres per unit. Uh, so they had to, so the developer has to request a rezoning. The city needs to approve that rezoning. And then the PUD is based on the rezoning that's requested and approved. The PUD then allows for the variance to that zoning to take place. So just cause there's a zoning that's on the table, doesn't necessarily mean it's a zoning that will be chosen. It doesn't mean that it's a zoning that won't. But historically, we see properties coming as an R one or an R two because those are generally put in a larger scope and designed and built for the larger type of developments.
Yeah, and, and maybe it's like outside of the realm of this. I think just my additional feedback would be that we continue to explore that side of it so that we stop, everything that's been developed doesn't meet R one. Like by letter of the load, it's, it's deviated so far from R one that like, why do we even have R one? So I, I don't know. Maybe that's not the, if that's not the intent of the old town residential, that's fine. Um, I would've thought we would do something a little bit more comprehensive, but that's okay. I think we can tackle this and then hopefully expand it, but I think that's a big need so that we make things more consistent and things actually meet our zoning, zoning uh, code.
Can we put in building re- like specific requirements of like it needs to look a certain way? So like they can't go and like demolish this house and then put up like the most ultra-modern house that manages to fit in this zone?
Commissioner, that's an excellent question. Yes, but no. So one thing that'll be brought forward uh, in about two to three planning commission meetings is a draft language for what we call the anti-monogamy ordinance. So that's something that we have, or monotony.
Oh, we like monogamy.
Let the record reflect that, uh.
So, uh, I apologize about that gaffe. Uh, so that, that's something that's coming forward and looking at. So when we're looking specifically towards this and when we look at development, um, to Commissioner Crosspoint, we have everything comes with a PUD when it comes to development. And that's one of the reasons that we looked at the R one A as a potential amending it. Law for smaller taking a look and doing an analysis throughout the community to what would be affected. And that's what was presented with uh, a month ago on the R one, which was denied for its amendment. Because there was a question about control by the city to be able to have greater control over those type of developments. When we're looking at Lennar and MI and Robert Thomas, that type of stuff, those are production home builders. They have five, seven, ten, twelve, whatever style homes that they're gonna build. And you can say the garage, the third stall's on the left or it's on the right and we want this. And then for the old town that we're looking at and with the R one way, A, the intent is, they have somebody comes in and says, okay, this house needs a lot of renovations. It's not financially worth doing it. But hey, if we split the property, we can build two new homes on it. Now those two new homes need to fit within the neighborhood. So if you have a lot of rambler, building ramblers, you have the two-story, you don't have the forty-eight hundred square foot finished home that's two and a half stories of the full basement, sitting next to a home that is a rambler that has a small deck and a shutout back. So that's the main thing that we're looking for. As far as the creative design of the home goes, there's a freedom of speech element to it that we have to be very careful not to abridge.
Could we have like a historical element to it? Like must maintain within the historical? Cause that's like between what nineteen seventy to nineteen nineteen in that section technically?
Commissioner, that is an interesting question. Um, I have worked in other communities which have historical districts. What I can say is that establishing a historical uh, dynamic to it involves a lot more than just a couple sentences within the, the ordinance. We would be talking a lot of work that would need to go into play as well as some legal actions the city might need to take to actually still add. If that's something that wanted to be explored, um, I, I would uh, request that that direction would come from the city council just because of the labor and the time intensification that that's gonna require.
If you look at, so Excelsior has a historical district downtown and uh, very complicated, very high bar to get that designation, um, oftentimes challenged in court. And then Deep Haven also years ago tried to go with an architectural standard. And um, generally lost time and time again because it was too subjective. You know, what you think is, looks great, I think looks like a, you know, piece of crap. Um, so who's architectural opinion? And, and again, they struggled for years and years to come up with a to, to stop the McMansion kind of, you know, cause Deep Haven, Excelsior, same thing. They have a lot of um, turn of the cen- turn of the past century cottages that they were seeing two or three of them get knocked down and then this ten thousand square foot house go up. And Excelsior's still struggling with that with the homes along the commons. You do, if you ever drive through there, it's really tough to keep the old.
Sure. And Chair Commission, one thing that this ordinance does is that when we're looking at those production type homes, you're looking at those three-car garages that are twenty-four feet deep, right? Or four-car garages that are twenty, twenty-four feet deep. Underneath the regulations, what you can do with an accessory structure, based on the size of the parcel, based on actually being able to build a home that can suit a single family. You're not gonna get a Lennar production home built anywhere within these regulations. It's, the properties are already generally small enough where that's gonna be difficult outside a handful. So as far as keeping a similar design, that's kind of built into what's possible to be built on the property based on market conditions. So that may change in the future, but under current conditions, you're just, we've talked to a couple of realtors. They don't know if they could sell a six hundred thousand dollar home next to a three hundred thousand dollar home just because there's that significance of a difference in how the property is used, maintained, all types of stuff. Not saying that one, one property owner is better or worse than the other or anything like that. It's just the style of the homes. They just don't fit. And generally individuals don't wanna buy homes where they're the sore thumb of the neighborhood sticking out. You don't buy the worst home. You don't buy the biggest home.
Other comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna say is the goal, the goal of this is to have people buy these homes and rebuild something else on the footprint, right? Isn't that why we're doing this?
Correct. Something similar uh, in size that of the surrounding homes, yes.
And so if we're accomplishing that by really only, I mean, changing the minimum lottery, what is the imperviousity of the existing? Are they all around thirty-five or close? Cause it looks like some of these are small lots and to be thirty-five percent seems almost impossible.
Generally it's thirty-five. They range between thirty and thirty-five. And then uh, the shoreline properties are, are limited to the twenty-five percent.
So if they, if, if I, if I bought a lot there and the existing structure was over the max impervious, would I have to use the existing foundation and all that kinda garbage? Or could I just demolish and reestablish on the same lot lines? Or could I create a new structure or?
Under statute, if you voluntarily destroy more than fifty percent of the value of a legal non-conforming structure, you lose the legal status for it. And then you have to come into full compliance during the remodel or reconstruction with the current zoning code.
So, so are we setting like, I'm just wondering if we're setting a too high of a bar on some, on the impervious, for example. If somebody, if you really want somebody to buy a lot over there and, and redevelop it into a, a nice home and the existing lot has a.
I think, I think the west ones were, there's SOX that are in the shoreline. It's the east ones. So I think that would be a good feedback is to double check that the east ones that are not in the shoreline.
If we want people to buy it and rebuild.
I agree. It's a good point.
Let's let them, you know, let's make it available in the code for them to buy and rebuild.
And the, on the minimum lot size, you get what about a twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred square foot? For a foundation. On the, if you had the minimum lot size, if you're gonna get what thirty-five percent impervious, I guess it was about twenty-five or twenty-six hundred square foot.
The foundation, so you go out and have a five thousand square foot house if you want.
And then, yeah, and I guess I was just thinking about if you have a.
Then you got max height.
Well, but that's.
Twelve hundred square foot garage or sixteen hundred square foot garage.
And then a driveway, cause these need a driveway.
So there, and, and those are all valid questions uh, and comments and we'll definitely take.
I would just say if our goal is to make these available to be sold and rebuilt, let's make them available to be sold and rebuilt and not have people back here saying, okay, well, the impervious was already over, but now I gotta keep the structure or not, or modify this or that like.
It's kinda, as, as a reminder underneath here, the properties that'd be able to subdivide uh, to meet these type of requirements are the, the five parcels that are highlighted between the red, the dark blue and the two greens. And the two red, you wouldn't be able to subdivide. So we're looking at three parcels for subdivision. So you'd be looking at parcel collection to do some type of redevelopment. Um, that would go into place. If some, if a developer came in to do that, it's likely they would have a request to the city uh, to take a look at maybe some.
Not, not, not a developer, individuals. Individuals wanna buy a lot, like are all of these lots gonna, kinda just tear it down and build, rebuild without having to, to this point, worry about the thirty-five percent?
You would still be restricted by the impervious cover regardless. So the question would be, is thirty, if thirty-five percent seems low, now granted, most. Now granted, most of these parcels that we're looking at are between twelve and eighteen thousand square feet. These aren't ninety-one hundred, they're not eighty-two hundred that we're seeing in some of our more recent production developments that have gone in. So these are larger parcels. If we're talking about the percentage, the question would have to come into play to what either directing staff to look at a certain footprint between the accessory structure as well as the footprint of the home. Uh, one of the reasons for the smaller setbacks is to get rid of five feet of that impervious cover in the front yard or in the rear yard because there are alleys in these areas too.
What could we, could something like, could be the greater of existing footprint or thirty-five percent impervious?
We would have to set a hard number, Commissioner. Um, and that's just the main reason for that is we wanna have a fairness in the application of the ordinance. If we say, well, it can be whatever it was when you demolished the home, then one home could say maybe be at forty-five and the other one's now at thirty-eight.
Sure.
But that.
Why, what's wrong with that?
The concern, the concern that I would have with that Commissioner is that that would be saying, well, you bought a parcel and you wanna do X, Y, or Z with it, but you bought it with current conditions, you didn't like the conditions. Therefore, you shouldn't have to abide by them. Well, if we start making selective enforcement on what a property should be, then we don't have an even application of the code between parcels. We wouldn't, we don't want.
But that, but property values all have different values because of their characteristics, right?
Prop- property values are set up in various ways. You have, you have the land value and you have the the building value or the the improvement value to a property. A lot of that is based on various formulas that go to the age of the home, goes to remodels, uh goes to type of home, type of footprint, uh and that type of stuff. If you put a new roof on your home, your home is five years younger now in the in the eyes of looking or generally. Sorry, I should say in general, speaking, I'm not an assessor. It makes your home a little bit younger, which actually raises the value of your home. But when we look at property values, we look at the type of property or the type of property, the dirt piece is looked at to figure out how much the dirt is worth for what that would realistically itself there wasn't a home there. And then the type of home that's there based on the age of home is compared to recent sales within a local and a regional area. It's actually some real fun stuff if you ever.
No, we all know how to assess home values, but my point is some lots are worth more than than the one right next to it. So if there's, if there's a house, you're saying that it can't be in the code as existing or X percent?
I would, I would.
It's a hard no, then let's move on.
I I'd be more than happy to talk to the attorney, but I would be very strongly against doing that because I I feel that it'd be difficult to staff for us to be able to justify an even application of that type of language.
Where we could maybe go is to say because we're going for a little bit higher density in the R one A, you know, dropping the square footage to nine thousand, maybe the impervious goes from thirty-five to thirty-seven or I don't know, forty's maybe too far. But so you you give.
Yeah, what's the max existing impervious in the region and set the watermark there?
Right.
Or or somewhere in between, cause there's probably a couple of small lots that you probably don't wanna go that that far. But I I do think that's a very fair comment and that staff should take a look at what is the max? What is the minimum and what is our distribution of current impervious percentages of these lots? Because I think that, I think it's a good point that thirty-five percent might not be enough.
And Chair Commission, what what we'll do is staff will take a look to see what properties are at and we'll present that to the city council to get feedback, to see if it's something that they would wanna entertain. And if they're looking to entertain, then we definitely bring it back to the planning commission for greater feedback on on that type of thing.
So I have a comment and then a couple of questions. Um, my comment is, I think we've now come full circle because uh we did this as a solution to not having the precedent of lowering the standards for R one developments generally. None of us like that, uh including impervious coverage setbacks and the like. So my 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 other comment is akin to Mallory's, and this is a charming area of Victoria that we all appreciate and value, and I'd like to see it remain like that. I wonder if there are some objective things. If we can't dictate architectural or aesthetic standards, are there things that we can do, for instance, um not allowing future access points from Victoria Drive into a property? Requiring preservation of heritage trees along Victoria Drive. Those sorts of things that would be objective, that would help preserve the aesthetics of this beautiful little area. Uh, I'm less concerned about setting a precedent for developers to come in and say, well, this is your R one A standard. This is what I want therefore for my P U D. I I don't really have a problem with thirty-five percent impervious. I I, but then again, I don't know. I mean, we do want people to build nice homes, not McMansions. And so the thirty-five percent acts as a bit of a regulator on on size as well, which is kinda nice. But I would, I would encourage the staff to look at other objective things that we could, we could do in this area to help keep it attractive.
I like the idea of the, of like the mature trees, you can't come in and you know, buy that thousand square foot house that's been there for a hundred years and knock it down, but I'm gonna take out fifteen mature trees to.
No, that's right.
Something bigger, so.
And and Chair Commission, we do have certain regulations already within the subdivision code, which would apply to any individual lot being subdivided.
Yeah.
That involves trees, especially heritage trees and and are more elder trees. So a lot of that's taken on case by case basis, but we do have regulations that we strictly enforce. Staff is very passionate about making sure that our tree preservation or vegetative means for redevelopment are followed.
Is there a way that we could see what kind of materials are being used for like the facing of houses? Of like, my thought process here is if we have, you know, these standard houses that are gorgeous in this area and then someone wants to go and build like a stucco house in the middle of all of this. Like, I don't think there's very many stucco houses in Victoria.
So I'm gonna go to the next presentation to bring up a slide. I'm getting getting back to that question, cause I'd like to stay on point with the R one A uh as much as we can during that discussion. So this is the last slide that I have for both presentations today. And if you look on the right side for the standards for residential districts, we have number nine, which right there is where we'll have the ability to set certain design standards that can't necessarily influence or can't restrict on the freedom of speech and freedom of expression. However, we can dictate. And there are limits to what we can do with that, but I said, this was gonna be something that we're we're gonna get to. But for now, we're just looking at that, because any change that would be done there would ultimately have an effect on the R one A. And I'll explain why and how that works uh when we.
I wasn't sure with the one A if that also applies for, or like.
Nope.
With one, it applies to everything or one A is just its own subset.
When you look at it, when you look at a zoning district and you see an R one A or an R one B, R one C, basically what that does is says, okay, you have your R one standard. Well, now you have R one A is a slight deviation from that to a specific area. R one B is the same thing to a different area and and things like that. That's where that comes into play. It allows to still have the single family, but allows for different standards based on the needs of the community within these areas.
All right, let's move on to the um next discussion item, which um.
Sorry.
No, oh, sure, no, no, it's fine.
But leave that chart up there. Based on the pace that this development would happen and the fact that we see um deviations all the ti- all the time anyway, and there's opinions on what we wanna keep in the area and not, doesn't it make sense to slightly alter one of these? To put a blanket on it to see devi- or to leave it and be able to see the deviations as they come up? Right? So instead of making a new code, a new R one A designation, leaving the existing, they're all under R one, single family currently. And then as the development happens, review the deviations case by case.
By variances or?
Yeah, variance.
That's spot zoning and you can't do that.
Chair Commission, that.
Maybe Travis.
We would not meet the practical difficulties test, especially to the plight of the landowner. Um, in that case, to allow for deviation, especially dimensional standards or in any of our bulk standards. And the main reason for that is that a property owner purchases the property. If they choose to redevelop it but don't like the rules and ask for a variance, then we're granting something specific to a property owner that the reason that they want it is for an economic purpose and an economic purpose alone. Not that the property couldn't be redeveloped. If you could build a home on it, doesn't matter if the footprint of the home is twelve hundred square feet or two thousand square feet, as long as you could redevelop a home, a variance would not be applicable.
That's where we got with the proposal that started this whole conversation, you know, a month ago or whatever, was and a variance wouldn't work. Um, it didn't fit the R one, so then they were talking about P U D. Well, we're not gonna do a P U D for one house or one or for two houses. And so as we kicked a lot of that around, finally said, well, maybe this area, given the way it developed a hundred years ago, um, we need a new, you know, R, just having R one was too restrictive.
Mini district, yeah.
Got it.
I I like the idea of R one A. Um, I I would encourage staff to look at objective criteria that would help preserve the the charm of the area, including front yard setbacks, access points, historic trees, that sort of thing.
Commissioner, all those things are very important and the direction that we were provided from the council was to keep that charm. So everything that we write, we wanna make sure that it's staying with.
Excellent. All right, anything further before we move on? All right, thank you Travis. Our second and final item for discussion tonight is item three point two, proposed revisions for Article Three of the zoning code update. I'll now turn it back to Travis uh for a presentation on this topic.
Chair Commissioners, now we get to get into the fun part of our zoning interview. There's a few new commissioners uh since we started this process earlier this year. Um, I would like to to point out before we begin, just a little bit of background with it. Staff started looking at this and doing specific ordinance updates that had came forward last year as well as the year prior um to get some of the shortfalls that we had in the code corrected. And as a result of that, um SaaS been able to find time uh to go through. I mean, not a lot of time, but enough time that we're able to go through. And we've gone through the entire zoning code page by page in its entirety, in its current format, and noted it and reviewed it and discussed it, wrote it into a modernized format, reviewed it, noted it, discussed it many, many times. There's a lot of, there's a lot of eyeballs on this process. We wanna make sure we get it right. We wanna make sure that we can have a fair and equal application of everything through it. Uh, any comments received tonight, any changes? Go into a redline version of the draft that you'll see in front of you. All that information is noted and it's gonna be tracked by staff so that we have a log of all the types of changes that we do. So far, we've only been through two articles. We're on Article Three. Everything goes into this wonderful binder here that has all our notes so we can go back and take a look at everything that we're doing. There are a lot of things to it. We're uh, tonight, we're gonna be looking at a lot of the performance standards, but because of the complexity that performance standards bring and the ability that they have to affect land use rights as well as the ability for you to just kinda do whatever with your property, we wanna make sure we take this a little bit slow so it's gonna be broken down into a little bit of a longer process. So with our zoning code update goals, first off and foremost, we wanna be transparent. We wanna make sure staff is available for questions and that any comments received are noted and that they can be discussed um either at the staff level with the planning commission, ultimately with the city council or any combination thereof. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're flexible during the process. Just cause we would say something tonight doesn't mean that uh we get to another part of the code and we don't need to go back like, you know what, it just doesn't work with what we thought before. So we're gonna have that type of stuff. It's gonna come up no matter how much we try, it's gonna happen. The other thing that we're looking at is we're looking at doing a re- uh review of our municipal code, which for the most part will not be seen by the planning commission. Because that's more, that's the criminal side of the or of the city code rather than the zoning side. There are sections that we'll wanna run by the planning commission for feedback, but we wanna do conjunction when we get into some things that are conflictual between zoning and municipal. We'll make sure of staff to point those out as best we can. Therefore, there's an understanding of why something is written in there or not written in there based on comments. The ultimate goal is to put the municipal and the zoning code back together into one city code and recodify. The goal is early twenty-six is probably gonna be closer to the end of summer or fall of twenty twenty-six uh just because the process is a little bit bigger than about a year longer than than initially anticipated. Just quick background, um, the reason that we started this was we were looking at the zoning code and we realized that there's a ton of shortfalls and all we were doing is patching everything together. The code was originally codified back in nineteen ninety-eight and subsequently it's had various amendments to it. So it's just, you had tons of different things in there and not everything lines up. Some things are out of date. We found some things that were illegal. Overall, we identified over five hundred items just within our zoning code that we need to take a look at for review. So the question was asked earlier, if we open the file and sometimes it just sits there and loads, absolutely. It's the the main file that all this is saved on is massive. We did, like I said, we went through and we looked at our more immediate amendments last year. Uh, so we looked at our business districts, bringing back the C one and C two, especially for our South growth development. Uh, we reviewed our condition use permits as well as instituting uh interim use permits. And a lot of that had to do with some of the ways that it was written. It was fine back in the nineties, back in the two thousands, but there's been different standards that needed to be applied. We looked at our sign ordinance and how that application goes as well as our fence ordinance, where some of the larger things that we looked at and got squared away um before we started this process. So the overall process is to review the proposed language, go through, look at everything. And this is the bulk standards, performance standards, overlay district, uh administrative uh tasks, clerical tasks and some of that legal stuff. There are certain zoning ordinances that we have that should be listed within our municipal code. There are certain ordinances within our municipal code which should be under the zoning code. Through this process, we'll cross those things over, um but like I said, we're gonna take things piece at a piece because doing the whole thing would be, we could spend an entire week for eight hours a day on it and scratch it. So, but this is a full review. Uh, we're planning on over twelve plus planning commission meetings to get through all of this. Like I said, we're tracking all the changes. Uh, we do have a master redline copy of what's being presented in front of you as well as paper copies that have various colors of color pencils, pens and other notes and sticky notes and all types of fun stuff with it. When we get to the point of getting ready for a public hearing, before we do that, staff will bring back a redline version that'll have all the comments finalized in a draft form for the planning commission review as well as the summary of it. So as far as keeping track of all the notes and everything is highly encouraged. However, staff will have it, so if you lose anything or have questions on what happened in this area, we'll have that information readily available. The order review, I said, there's, this is the new format that we're looking at. Um, when we're looking at the code, right now, we're in Article Three, which is for performance standards or the district regulations. District regulation is broken up for all districts. So anything applies, doesn't matter what district you're in, that's the rule, specific to business districts and specific to residential districts. This is talking about the performance standards, not necessarily the use specific that's there. So we're not looking at use tables yet. We'll get to those type of things. So jumping right into it, we're looking at two specific items tonight of Article Three. The first is Division One, which is our, in general, that's your more administrative setting your tent, whatnot. And then Division Two, which is our performance standards. The performance standards are part of the meat and potatoes of what a zoning code is. And this is where there's the most confusion, it is the most complicated and you will never be a hundred percent right on it. I just wanna make that clear. No matter what is decided and what is approved, there will always be someone who disagrees with it. And there, there's always change. That's why we have an amendment process. So this is to the zoning code and the city code. So Division One in general, uh when we look through it, we have our district classifications. We're identifying the business, the residential and the overlay districts. You'll notice on that page that we have rural residential and we have the R one A listed under residential. We don't have any properties listed as rural residential, however, our comp plan identifies that that is potential zoning. So therefore, we wanna make sure that we put regulations in for that zoning. So therefore we want to make sure that we put regulations in for that zoning so that it can be applicable. Those properties are generally agricultural properties, less than ten acres. Uh, and then the R one A, which we discussed earlier, we need to get added. We also look at the uses part. That's the rights of the city. The prohibited use is not specified within the code. So if we don't have something that says you can do it. It means that you can't do it is basically what it means. It's a, it's a catch all verbiage that's put in there. So. If someone wants, if we say, or someone wants to build a treehouse as their, as their home and whatnot. And we don't, and we don't say that the residential district can allow for it, then at that point they would apply for amendment. To put that type of stuff in so we can still be flexible with the needs of the community without overreach and without overextension. So like I said, in front or on the screen is all our district classifications. Uh, we have four business districts. We have. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight residential districts that are proposed as well as a few overlay districts. Right now we have the shoreline management district that exists and we have the Lake Minnetonka residential district, which under our current code is its own district. However, the standards that are set there are R one standards, but a little bit more strict. So therefore that better fits as an overlay district rather than having it as a residential district on its own. We have floodplain management district. We still have to meet floodplain rules, but getting things in and making sure that we're pulling from the other parts of the code to get this in place is good. Uh, the bluffland area district is something else that we've identified. We don't have a whole lot of bluff areas. It's based on slope. That goes in there. And then the conservation residential district. If you look at some of the P U Ds that we've looked at over the past year, at least the year that I've been here. We've talked about doing a lower density to conserve trees and things like that. Especially, uh, down in our South growth area. That's all done under the regulations that the D N R said that we should be following. What this would be later on is actually putting it into the code. So that's where some of like our shortfalls come in, just to break that down a little bit. We would just want to get those things identified. So we have clear direction. Regardless of who's on the planning commissioner, who's on the city council or what developer comes in, we, we all are on the same page at those standards. Um, like I said, with the uses, uh, the big thing in here is if it's not listed, it's not permitted. There is the question on, well, what if a use is similar to another use? Well, when we were looking at Article two, we looked at language that said, hey. Can the zoning or can the, the zoning administrator, can the planning commission determine if a use is similar enough to another use? Like if you have a Papa Murphy's. Is that a restaurant? Is it a deli? Is it a taken bag? What is it? We don't have any classification for it. So that's where that determination comes into play. Um, so just because it's not listed, doesn't mean there's not other means. Uh, the other thing that we look in there is that an appeals process, uh, can be taken into place. That process is also listed out in the previous article and follows state statute. Now we're looking at the performance standards, um, which is like I said, our meat and potato. The intent is why the performance standards exist. It sounds like a question, but it's truly intent. Why do we want to say what we would want to allow ourselves, our neighbors and the community to be able to do with their property? And what are things that we don't want? Do we want to allow freedom where you could build a racetrack or do we want to say, hey, you have to have a nice lawn? Or in between. So that's what we're going to be determining. When we're looking at the standards for the all districts, we're going to take a look at utility location. We're going to take a look at fences. Single and two family garage and accessory structures. We're going to look at off street parking and driveways. We're going to look at outdoor storage and entertainment structures. We're also going to look at exterior, exterior solid fuel fired heating devices. Basically external furnace to heat your house, heat your garage and, and whatnot. Construction within outlots as well as additional landscaping requirements that are outside our subdivision ordinance, which is listed on our municipal code. So just kind of looking at the intent, there's a lot of words up there, a lot of different things, but basically what it says is that. This is our intent and purpose for having the standards, health, safety, setting the community standard. This type of language has been borrowed from our code and has been borrowed from a few other codes. Has been modified to feed or to fit something that staff has agreed upon for the language to sit at. So utility locations and fences, um, utility locations. We have a lot of fiber going in. We have water. We have sanitary sewer. We have storm sewer. We have. Drain tile. We have all types of stuff in the ground that's owned by the city. Or not owned by the city or what have you. So now we want to look at where can that stuff go? And what this does is it basically says that everything has to be placed underground when feasible. So we have a new subdivision. You don't write, you, we're not running overhead power or Excel or Minnesota Valley is not running overhead power. You don't have cable TV being run above ground. Everything's got to be put below ground. So. You're cleaning up your, your visual aspects in one way, uh, more than another. So that's, that's basically where that says, and that's practical and feasible, which means that if it's not practical or feasible. Then it's something that they would come to the city and say, hey, we can't do it. Here's why. And then a determination is made. Probably by staff on if it goes in with the city engineer. Uh, fences, uh, we didn't.
We paused there for a sec. I mean, this is a little bit of a digression, but as we look at new developments. Do we have any ability to say the city is going to put down? A utility conduit or whatever. And where I'm going with this is so we don't have. Five cable companies coming in and tearing up yards to, you know, to run their own fiber optic.
Commissioner, we do have the ability to do that. Yes. There are pros and cons to that. The, uh, the con is, is if the city says to a developer, you have to put a conduit for these other private businesses to come in. Who pays for that? City's not going to want to pay for a private business to install their infrastructure and the city doesn't get any financial gain out of it.
No, but we could go.
Or if we have, uh, if we required a developer to do it, that could be a cost that could push them away. And make it more enticing to go to a different community or build a different type of home. If we look at saying. Uh, your telecommunications companies need to have their stuff in the ground during development. That can pose a challenge because the public utilities commission and the rights that these type of companies have. To work within the boulevards and within the easements. So it's.
Where I'm going with it is the developer is going to put in. A pipe. I'm using that euphemistically.
The developer doesn't put in that type of material. That's a private business outside of it. So if we have a new development comes in and let's say, um, MediaCom wants to run their cable. The developer doesn't install that. MediaCom installs it.
No, but at the time of the development. Somebody put down the first utility. And typically the developers paying for that is part of their street.
That, that's all paid for private by the company that owns that utility. The only thing that would go into the ground that the developer generally pays for is for city infrastructure. Because that's part of the deal for them to build the street, put our pipes in and then those, all that, all of the street as well as the pipes are transferred over to the city. Upon successful completion of the development or however the.
Okay. Uh, I won't beat it to death tonight. I'm just saying. We ought to be able to get to a point where we only put one pipe down.
I, Commissioner, I'd be more than happy to talk to you, uh, offline about it. There's a lot of rules and I don't want to get into everything, uh, during this discussion tonight. But I'd be more than happy to go over that type of stuff and the answers that I can't provide. I'd be more happy to look up or point you in the direction if we can provide them.
Okay.
So fences is something that we looked at last year and we removed and we replaced. And a couple of things happened when we were going through that. Like I said. We always try to be perfect, but we know we're not going to be. There are a couple of things that we missed. One is that the intention was to make sure that we didn't have any pipe or any post going to the ground within six feet of a storm sewer. Or we didn't want a fence within so close of, uh, a sidewalk or, or sanitary pipe or what have you. Well, the way that we wrote it is we wrote it to the fence. We should have done and said that the post. Because if you have a pipe in your backyard in an easement, you should be allowed to cross that pipe. Through the easement. If it's a ten foot easement, you should be able to cross it. So if the posts aren't within that. Or if the posts meet the six foot away with a double gate, you have twelve feet worth of access. Which talking with public works and the city engineer should be enough to get to the storm pipe. So we just made that clarification so that the intent of the change matches now the language that we have in there. The other thing that we missed, we didn't talk about construction fences, your type of temporary fences. Um, so this is your. So this is, construction fences are erected for the purposes of screening and security of a construction site. They're only there for the construction they go down. We don't have clear language in the code that says that they can be there, they can't be there and so on and so forth. This would be something just to clean it up. Uh, we've also had another community reach out to ask about our fence ordinance because they heard that we had updated it and had a conversation with them. And they thought this was a great idea as well. So.
Wouldn't that be covered in the building or the building permit?
You would, Commissioner, I would agree that it does and that's why we don't see it in anybody's code. But we did have significant pushback and, uh, challenges provided by, uh, various residents to the community over the last. Six to nine months. So we just want to make sure that we clarify that. So we have more ground to stand on. But yes, we, uh, staff, we agree that it did. Uh, so next thing to look at is the single family and two family garages. Make sure I'm on the right page here. Okay. So when we look at single family and two family garage and accessory structures, we're going to be looking at our residential. So we have agricultural rural residential, R one, R two, R three. So the first thing we want to look at is the R one, R two, R three, which is going to apply to just about everywhere. The agricultural and the rural are going to have a little bit of exceptions that have been written in, but basically. Two structures, the maximum, same as we have now, same as was proposed for the R one A. Height restriction to the height of the principal structure, same language proposed in the R one A. Total footprint restricted to the principal structure, same as presented in the R one A. Um, not considered, uh, habitable except for ADUs, same thing we see in the R one A. Uh, one of the differences that we have is accessory structure setback increases one to one. Or one foot back for every foot that it's over twenty feet in height. The main reason for this is if you want to, if you put in a thirty five foot tall home, which is allowed. And then you do a thirty five foot tall garage, is six feet from the side yard appropriate? Or do we think that it should be pulled further back so it doesn't feel like it's towering over the adjacent property? The garage door limited to ten feet, um, for our production developments, that could be a P U D item if their type of design is hot grader than that. It is something that, um, should be added actually over to the agriculture and residential.
So that's just saying that if like a development comes in, they want to do R one, but they want to have RV garages attached. They have to have that in the P U D.
That design would have to get approved.
Okay.
It's the, it's something that we looked at with the P U D where they want to do carriage homes. Attached to it, which is basically your detached garage is going to have a semi living space above the garage and generally it's a larger, taller space. They had to come back to the city council and the planning commission to get permission to do that. So that's where that would be.
Travis, in the language I read, um, in the meeting packet. I, I would make it emphatic that, um, this new standard applies to all residential. And I'd also make it emphatic that it excludes commercial and agricultural because, um. Some of these standards wouldn't work for ag. For example, the, the door height, um.
The Commissioner chair, the specific section for this is underneath single family and two family garages.
Yeah.
So if you have an R three go in that builds a, an apartment building, which would be permitted. Then that apartment building isn't a single family or two family structure at that point.
So you're excluding our threes?
Yep.
Wasn't, and I may have misread this, but I thought that there was a two thousand square foot max size.
So there.
On accessory structures.
Correct. So two thousand feet would be the maximum size for anything. So that's based on the total footprint. So if you build a, a home that has a footprint, so the foundation is two thousand square feet. Then you could do two thousand square feet of an accessory structure and your attached garage. But if you're building a home that that's large, that's, that's a really significantly large home. Um, compared to if you're putting in a home that has a twelve hundred square foot. Now you're going to have a smaller garage and things that were, a lot of the homes that are being built that. You know, around a thousand square foot, but they're three and a half stories tall with a basement. And whatnot. So that's restricting the size of your total accessory structure.
Do we want to say, we want to apply like a percentage to that? So right now we're saying it can be up to the, up to two thousand feet or the size of your principal structure.
Whichever is, whichever is less.
And are we.
But do we want to do like seventy five percent? Like, do we really want to see garages that are the same size of the houses? That seems. Not in line with the Victorias.
Yeah.
Where Victoria is and where it's, where it's going.
Are we talking, are we talking foundation size?
Foundation size. Just foundation size.
So not square footage?
Just foundation.
Oh, sure. But your foundation is still, it's square feet. It's A times B. It's square feet.
Right, right, right. Well, a two thousand foot garage would be about a ten car garage. Do we really want ten car garages in our?
Maximum, but it, the other part, if you're looking at a ten car garage, you're probably looking at greater than a two thousand square foot. Footprint of the home. But that'd be ten car garage, but that's broken up between two garages. That's fine. Underneath the current code, per perspective of what we see throughout the community. You have an attached garage to your house. And you build, you can build up to the maximum purview. There is no limit on how big that attached garage can be. We only regulate the size specifically for detached with a nine hundred square feet or thirteen fifty with a conditional use permit. What this does is this is more of a middle ground between the two and sets that standard. When we look at. Some of the larger homes being built in our, in our current developments. They have three car garages, four car garages, twenty four, twenty six feet deep. So if you're looking at each stall, you figure it's about twelve feet wide by twenty four. You're going to end up to, what's that, two hundred and eighty square feet per stall. So you're looking at eleven hundred square foot. For a four car garage right there. And those are going on some of our smaller properties that are allowed to have fifty percent impervious. Or allowed to have the five thousand square feet or more specifically. Down by Marsh Lake where they're allowed to have forty five hundred square feet worth of actual hardcover on the property.
I think my, my thought just is like, again, going to the extreme. I don't think. A, um, accessory structure should ever be the same size as. Whatever the primary structure, whatever it's called. I, I suggest that we, you guys consider. Putting in a multiplier. So be no greater than two thousand square feet or seventy five percent of the principal structure, for example. I don't know if seventy five percent is the right work, is the right number, but I suggest you guys take a look at that.
We don't, we don't want a repeat of the situation we had on Smithtown Road. I don't think any of us are good about.
Not only that, just like it, it's not the character of Victoria to see accessory structures the size of the primary structure. It just doesn't make sense. I just don't think we should write it in a way that that could happen.
Chair, I have that note in there that we can take a look.
Yes.
See what, excuse me, Commissioner, I apologize. Mr. We, I have that noted in here to take a look at what those sizes would be and kind of how that would work. And we'll take a look at adjacent, uh, communities to see what's there, see if we can find some language. In other communities to see how that would look. And then we can. Actually do a deeper dive into that process. So yeah, but the intention of all this, it goes back to if it's a res, if it's a single family residential property. You should be seeing a single family residential property when you drive by. Not something that is out of place. And we've learned based on our code and based on applicants and some creative individuals who have built over the years. There are some shortcomings that don't necessarily meet the intent of what we're looking at. Or maybe the intent at the time was to allow for those type of structures and it just isn't anymore and that's part of this process.
That to Aaron's point though, I don't think anybody would, would describe as conducive to Victoria's. Aesthetic, two structures of the same size. I, I just don't think that makes sense. You don't want a home and a garage to be both two thousand feet or whatever it is.
And if, and if you built a garage underneath the proposed language, Chair and Commission, if you built a garage that matched the footprint of the home. You wouldn't even be allowed to put a shed on your property. So that would be, that just wouldn't be there. So that's part of how this works. I don't, I don't know how many developers build like that, but I could see.
Cause of a shed if you have a wood sized garage. Um, and I just want to clarify that I read it right when I reviewed this. In our previous language, uh, attached garage were not accessory structures and now we are making them. Is that correct?
We're only making mix, we're making them accessory structures by, through zoning. Not through building code. It's only through zoning to consider it as part of. Not through building code, it's only through zoning to consider it as part of the total footprint of accessory structure.
Okay, cool, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, you can't get, you can't get around this by building a breezeway.
No. If, if you build a breezeway, it's a detached, if it's not a breezeway, it's attached. The attachment, that was, was part of the conversation that was done when we had an appeal over permit along Smithtown. And that property, because of how the garage was attached to the home, is considered attached. A breezeway is basically you have a covered area that doesn't have any HVAC, any power, it's outdoor space that you put a cover on.
Okay.
So it's the simplest way.
So I said poorly, whether it's attached or detached, we're still limiting the size of that structure.
Correct, the total footprint, you can have up to two and we want to say, here's the limit you can get to based on the proportions of your home.
For the garage height, um, I see here for, on garages, A, number four. Except for agricultural and rural residential, can we have an exception for garage door height as well?
That was, Commissioner, that is something that I noticed when I was reading this that we missed. So I've, I've already got that noted.
Okay.
It's def- definitely something, is out of, on a pole barn, tractors are taller than cars. And they're going to need a bigger garage door to get inside. The other thing that we're looking at on here, accessory structures will be prohibited from being used for commercial purpose. Big part of that, just like in the R one A language that's being proposed, a lot of this is the same. But the big part to it is that if you have a home occupation, it should be in the home. And staff does have draft language of home occupation regulations, which we'll get to at a future meeting. Same thing with the shipping containers being used as an accessory structure. Just can't do it, you want to use it for moving, fine, but you can't just plop one down and say, that's my shed. For the agricultural and rural residential, they would get exceptions to have a, a pole barn or a metal covered storage building. They're also would be permitted to have a max footprint that is not based on the size of the home, rather it is based on the size of the property. So if they're less than ten acres, two thousand square feet, they can still have their two structures, but only up to two thousand. More than ten acres, twenty-five hundred square feet, or they could come to the planning commission, city council and request up to thirty-five hundred with a conditional use permit. That is kind of standard, a, a practice that's been done in various communities. The actual sizes, that is a preference of the community itself, there's no standard that's ever been set for that. But if you build a forty by fifty foot pole barn, that's two thousand square feet right there. And if you have more than just a couple tractors, you're going to need more storage. Any questions so far on this slide?
Random thought here. For any of this, does the fire station fall into any of these categories?
So the fire station is not being built on a residential property.
Okay.
It is also a, a public building. And there's.
There's exceptions for all those, right?
Along those lines, yes, there are special circumstances that should be permitted. And the city has the right to, underneath our rules and underneath statute to make certain exceptions or relax standards. But the city still has to follow the rules of everybody else. It, it's a matter of illegal opinion.
Gotcha.
For, for more detailed answer, I'm not the person to answer. We're looking at off-street parking and driveways.
Can we, I had a que, um. It's paragraph I, and it wasn't really in your, on the air conditioning units. Located at a minimum of twenty feet from all lot lines. And, and not within the front, but we, we have side yard setbacks.
I think, correct, so what would happen is with this, if a developer came in, they want to put it on the side. It would just be part of the PUD package that they would apply for. The main reason is, is that we're starting to see more and more sensitivity to noise, light, vibration. So we want to make sure that we have those type of items addressed in, in here. Uh, that's one of the questions that the staff, we did have some decent conversations on, should it be in there, should it not be in there? Should there be a distance, should it be screening noise, what would it look like? So looking at different codes, I've, I saw the twenty foot in multiple codes. And it, it made sense if you're redeveloping a home, instead of putting the air conditioner right next to the property line, next to your neighbor's house. Maybe stick it in the back where there's more room for the noise to disperse and cause less disruptions. So that would just come down to the design of the home. It's nothing that as staff we're entirely set to and we're open to change on it. I, my last house had AC unit in the back and it sucked, I would not recommend we keep that in there.
Okay.
Killed your backyard vibe.
I mean, I guess I think about the R one A where we have narrower lots and the locations of that unit could be difficult. Be difficult to keep it away, that far away from the side yard.
Well, is it possible that we can have it ran in there to have like a sound mitigation, like a fence or something?
That, Commissioner, that could add to the cost of development.
Right.
That's not something that we would necessarily want to do. Something that would be smaller, but what it would look like and be able to be safely done. I know for certain type of electrical boxes and things like that, that, that can add thousands of dollars of cost. So if you go to replace your air conditioner, now you have to come into complete conformance with the zoning code. Now you just bought a brand new air conditioner for a few grand, had it installed, and now you got to throw a few grand on top of that. I don't know if that's necessarily fair. To do, but it is something that, that we could take a look at, but that would be the, the con that I would.
Could it be for having a sound mitigation for houses that are within ten feet of each other?
Still don't think we want to put that into the code, like HOAs want to mandate that or something, like let them do that at the smaller level, I don't think we should do that at the city.
My concern, it basically says you got to put it in the backyard. I can't put it in the front and my side yard setbacks are not twenty feet, by definition, I'm in the backyard.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we strike, that's the wrong, wrong thing to do.
If the consensus strike it, I've already crossed it out on. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner.
Yeah, good catch.
Any other questions regarding this part? Uh, the next is off-street parking and driveways. All parking must be on an improved surface, underneath our current code, if you want to park in your grass, go for it. We don't have anything that says you can't do it. So that the tier A's, front lawns and things like that, so staff thought it was important to make sure that we say it has to be an improved surface, an improved surface, concrete, asphalt. Class five, if you want to do it in your backyard or in your front yards. But not a class five driveway, so if you're going to redo your driveway and you're within side, the district, you need to go with pavement. And then we have in there a certain amount of feet of pavement, I believe it's forty feet is what we put in, so. That, that's one of the things that we, we saw in there.
Can we have an exception for agricultural, for farm equipment?
So farm equipment would be generally stored or be used in the fields. The intent of this is to make it for vehicle parking. So, um, I can note it to take a look.
Random question on that, for people who like to use old farm equipment as decoration in their front yards.
Yard art?
Commissioner, that is considered art and it is protected.
Okay.
So we cannot be, we, we have to look at this objectively with anything. And art is subjective and is protected, so if somebody just abandoned a vehicle in their front yard and wants to call it art, that's one thing. If they go out there and it's painted and they put a little fence around it and, you know, they got flowers or whatever growing out of it and they actually did something with it, that's a different thing. So there's different ways to look at it, in those cases, if there's a question on it, definitely can call and consult in the city attorney. Before we would take any action. The other thing that we're looking at is single driveway permitted for single and two family homes. Basically, we have that rule, but underneath our current ordinance, it, there's a discretionary rule that's in there that allows staff to make a determination if you can have a second driveway. How do we apply that fairly? We don't know, so get rid of it and keep it simple, saying you can have one driveway. Even if you're on a corner, pick where you want to put your garage and there's your driveway. Front yard impervious cover to thirty-five percent, that is something new, that's, uh, that we looked at. Basically what it is, so you don't have a driveway that comes up, meet your maximum with a twenty-four feet at the property line. Then the entire front yard turns into parking and asphalt and concrete. It still keeps that single family feel to the property, the neighborhood and doesn't look out of place. Uh, we did look at some of the developments that came in, even with the new production homes coming in and the standard design for those. They don't hit the thirty-five percent for the front yard. So, and if it was something within the design that would come into place, the impervious cover such as carriage homes and things like that. That would be something that could be requested through the PUD process. Uh, we want to make sure there's not encroachment upon easements for driveways, except to access the street. Uh, no less than six yard, or six feet in the minimum on the side yard, some of our older properties don't have side yard easements. So this makes it so you can't put your driveway right on the property line, you have to have a separation. Some of that's for snow storage, some of it's for aesthetics, some of it's because not everybody knows where their property lines are. And it's just, it's one of the things, uh, we looked at a parking space creating standard sizes, which is eight and a half, eighteen. And creating compact spaces, eight by sixteen. That part's important because we're going to be looking at parking standards for number of parking that's required, diagonal parking, parallel parking, things like that. As far as compact spaces go, one of the criteria in there is that compact spaces wouldn't be angled or parallel. Because we want to make sure that if it ever gets restripped in the future, it still works for the safety of, of the road with the design. Drive aisles get defined, a lot of this is in our engineering manual and in our subdivision code. But it's important to make sure that we define what those are, so we're looking at eighteen feet in a single direction of parking lots between the parking spaces. Or between the curb and a parking space, same thing with two-way traffic. Also parking spaces must be on a property in which the parking spaces are intended to serve. So if you have parking spaces, we have parking spaces across from city hall that are used for city hall. In the CBD district, we have special regulations that allow an exception to that parking rule that are clearly stated in the code. That allow to use parking away or use a parking spot for multiple businesses in their calculation. This more focuses on your residential areas and your C one and C two areas. But unless we put in something specific to allow for an exception, i- it's there. The other thing is, electric vehicle parking, allowing for that to go into place. And the reason that this is in here is because the pedestal is used to charge the vehicles, generally have to be placed on the curb. Sometimes those are placed within an easement or within side setbacks, this allows for that encroachment to be two feet into it. So you're, you're not having a weird designer having to shrink a parking lot, all to accommodate electric vehicles. In the green initiatives, the Met Council is definitely going to be pushing towards us.
Question on that, what if it encroaches on sidewalk, does that not get in the way of?
If this, Commissioner, if the sidewalk is built and generally sidewalks in residential areas are built six inches off the edge of the right away. So off the property line. In your commercial districts where this is more likely to go, or within your residential common areas where these could go. This would just allow that to go and say if your parking setback is ten feet or twenty feet from the edge of the right away. That, well now you can encroach two feet into that setback with your charging station, so you can still have nice clean lines for your parking lot. That, that's the intent behind this. There are setbacks that are going to be in place for parking, just about everywhere except for central business, which is a very unique area. But that's what we're looking at.
I just want to make sure that like for ADA, like if someone has a wheelchair or something, they can still get by and all that is.
Regardless of what our zoning code says, you still have to meet all those federal regulations.
Okay.
And there's nothing we can do to get around it because they're not going to give us a variance. And we don't want to ask for one either.
My other thought too is parking space standard size. That eight and a half by eighteen, is it? That's been the standard for like ever, correct? Uh, our cars aren't that small anymore, so it, has there, has engineering or anybody looked at widening the standard? By a foot or two?
Lanes on the road yet.
Right.
So cars are still built generally with the similar wheelbase.
I was just thinking for like specifically for parking, because when you do park, then you have to get out. You know, there's not as much space now between each individual vehicle.
Commissioner, we did take a look at that and one of the comments that we made as staff was, well, what if you have a big F three fifty duly? Can you fit it in space? Well, an F three fifty duly is twenty-two feet in length, it's not going to fit there anyways. But you do have people with larger vehicles that try to park in these spaces. It can cause some issues, but having to create bigger spaces to accommodate a small portion of, of vehicle parking. Doesn't seem, uh, at least in staff, it didn't seem like a good application. Those individuals that drive those larger vehicles understand they're larger vehicles and they have to deal with the consequences of having those larger vehicles. And the challenges that parking or smaller streets have.
I would challenge you that F one fifties don't fit in those spaces and they're the most sold vehicle in the United States. I think that's to your point is people aren't driving compact cars anymore.
And that's one of the things that we, Commissioner, one of the things that we did look at is when we're looking at parking spaces. Which is a whole nother part we're going to get to in the future. With that, we did take a look at different types of vehicles, percentage of compact cars has actually decreased in the United States. And looking at our parking standards and things like that. What I would recommend is instead of focusing tonight on that eight and a half by eighteen. When we get to the section on parking and parking requirements for certain types of businesses and areas. At that point, we can take a look to address, because there'll be greater information on what's being proposed. And then we can make the change and simultaneously make adjustments if we need to.
Gotcha, yeah, I wasn't sure since this is all general, all zones.
This is, there, there's a lot of things and Commissioner, our chair and commission, like I said, there's a lot of things we're going to have to get to in the future. This is just part of it, this is more high level and we'll, we'll get through it, um, so.
I had a couple of questions on this whole section four. Just documents, structure wise, this is all still part of single family? I mean, I'm sorry, all districts?
This would be for all districts, correct?
And just from a format standpoint, because in a couple of the other places you actually break out residential versus commercial. It seems like four could follow a similar format because I, J, K, M. They're all commercial district kind of requirements.
Commissioner, one of the things that we'll be doing is the other two parts to article three. Is that's specific at the business, as well as residential separating those two out for specific standards that fall within those zoning regulations. These are more general guidelines, so even if the residential and commercial are mixed within this section of the code. What it does is if the commercial doesn't apply to a single family or two family property, at that point, you're already in compliance with that part of the zoning code. This is setting a minimum generalized standard.
If I look at M as an example, electric vehicle charging stations, I'm in all districts now. Is this applying to private homes?
Uh, yes.
And, and as a private property owner, I can install a EV charging station in a, in a parking space and charge a fee for it, so I can put a, and put a charging station out there at the end of my driveway and charge my neighbors for it?
Commissioner, I believe that's a, a stretch of the intent, but if you're, if you're putting a charging station on your property for the purpose of sale. You're now operating a commercial business and that commercial business would not fit within the category of a home occupation, which we'll be discussing later in the code. Which would not be permit, or so that would not be permitted in a general sense.
All I'm saying is I think we could clarify this very easily by just breaking it out residential versus commercial. Like, like you're doing in, in the, in paragraph, or section five. You have, section five. You have, section five, outdoor storage and structures. We start with five A, all districts, five B, business districts. Why don't we do the same thing in section four?
It goes down to the type of, of use for the type of performance standard. Like I said, there are, there's more detail to this, this is just a part of the larger picture.
Okay.
Applicated, and unfortunately, I don't.
Those are my comments.
Unfortunately, I don't have all the information presented tonight, but I do have draft of future language that'll be coming back. Be more than happy to have a conversation, allow you to review that information outside of a planning commission meeting. I think I then I could better address your questions than in the meeting tonight, so I do apologize.
We move on.
Uh, the next part that we're looking at is the single-family and two-family garage structures. Um, basically this is an amendment, the highlights of it, uh, screening of trash containers already exists. You're supposed to store your trash containers inside your garage or have it screened from public view. That's common, so we're not looking to get rid of that. Uh, screen HVAC systems. That was something that we've seen in some more modern language, but it's not everywhere. Basically, if you have your air conditioning units on the side of your home, if I'm walking down the street. Put a bush or small fence or some landscaping in front of it, and then you're compliant with the screening, something like that. Um, that is one of the points where it's kind of, do we really need it? Or do we not really need it? But from a personal perspective on it, I think that it helps hide some of the, the utilitarian stuff that we have to do with homes.
I, I think that should be controlled at the H O A level, not at the city level.
So I was gonna ask, so then what's the difference between a bush and then some fence?
It comes down to the definition of real opaqueness.
And all the P U Ds we've just approved, I mean, I looked through the developments that have gone up. And there's a HVAC unit hanging off the side of the house with no screening, I mean.
We don't, we don't have that requirement currently with our code. So this would be if the code got approved, if the code got approved that language. It would be from the date of adoption that that would be a requirement, so that'd just be something part of the review process. But if there's consensus to have it removed, I'm all in favor of that consensus. Um, the other thing we looked at is screening of exterior storage from public view and adjacent properties. Um, big thing with that is if you're in a stack wood. And we're looking at the different types of homes. We do have homes that are on larger properties and things like that. But if you're gonna stack wood in a general sense, it should be screened. Does that mean it's gonna be screened on every property? Absolutely not. But if it creates some type of issue, and then at that point. That's when we would want to look at different things. So, it just, it allows for a tool for enforcement if something becomes a problem, or if somebody is storing washers and dryers underneath. Uh, a tent in the backyard or a carport or something like that, this is just what it is. When we look at screening, we're looking at eye level, so under six, six feet at the max. And we're looking at screening being an opaqueness of eighty percent. So, you can only see twenty percent through whatever's blocking it. Just for a little bit of clarification on the screening part. That's more of an enforcement tool that we would have to address though. It's not something that we would necessarily be driving around because we don't do active code enforcement. Uh, carports and tent garages, uh, these are temporary structures. These aren't permanent ones, they're temporary structures. Um, so if you have, like outside a hotel, they have the area where you drive up here underneath the canopy. That's a permanent structure, it's a part of the permanent structure. If that was a canvas tent, it's a temporary structure. We would limit that to a hundred and eighty days. Doesn't mean that everybody's gonna follow it, there's no permit we're gonna require for it. But what it does is it allows us to have an enforcement tool, so somebody's not having uh, this type of material up for years and years, and it just falls apart, and then it's harder to get rid of. Because now there's an emotional attachment to it. Uh, with the business and the commercial, uh, still screening of all outdoor storage. If you have a business, say we have a, an electric company and they need to put their trucks and their vans and whatnot. They're being stored outside, there would be a screening requirement that would go with that for them to keep it there more than just for their daily use. Same thing with if you have, uh, within our C two, you might have a firework tent show up for the Fourth of July outside of Cub Foods, let's say we had one. Well, they're allowed to bring things outside the tent for display, but as soon as they close, everything's gotta go back inside the tent. So you can't just leave that type of stuff out, um, all the time. Uh, screening of vehicles parked more than forty-eight hours. Basically, we're looking at creating a definition, we've parked and stored for vehicles. Parked vehicles under forty-eight, stored is greater than forty-eight, and we can apply that evenly throughout the entire code. And then no storage within setbacks. Is, is the big thing. We don't want setbacks, we don't want an easements. So if your accessory structure is a ten-foot setback. You can't go behind there and just stack a whole bunch of stuff behind it, or put fifty-gallon barrels back there and say, well, it's not a structure. Um, the exterior solid fuel-fired heating devices, also uh, their coal or wood burning fire furnaces placed outside the structure, also known as outdoor stoves. We know that there's a potential that they can exist in Victoria. Though we don't know about it because we haven't gone around to our more larger properties to take a look. But if you're on a larger property and you want to heat your pole barn with it, or you want to heat your garage with it. We feel, or staff feels that that should be acceptable with reasonable regulations. So that's why we looked at only within the air culture and the rural residential, because they do produce smoke. Um, and the other thing would be seventy-five feet from the property lines. The biggest difference from these is these are running throughout the day, throughout the winter, compared to a residential fireplace. We should throw some wood in when you get home from work or on the weekends or, or what have you, so it's more of a temporary use. These, these are more permit. Um, the other thing with it is making sure we have a list of appropriate materials by also creating a list of materials that are strictly forbidden. You're not gonna be burning plastics or garbage, we don't have incinerators going, we're not gonna allow people to use it as a tannery or anything like that. Gotta use clean wood, clean coal, whatever it may be. In addition to that, because of the smoke that these can produce, we're also looking at the municipal code right now and taking a look at uh, nuisances, and part of that will be to address dense smoke and that type of stuff.
It's good.
So, that's, that's a big part. So there's a kind of a crossover to, we have a regulation, we can enforce it zoning-wise. But now what do we do when it creates an issue? Municipal side takes care of that. Uh, structures on city outlots, this was a point of friction, um, over the last twenty-plus years, this has been a point of friction. We don't have any specific language which makes it so you can't put something on there. It is trespassing, it is damaging city property. It's not your property. So now we can put something in there that says, hey, you can't do it. You can't build your garage, you can't build your, you need, okay, big thing. Can't put your garage on it, that's more of a permanent structure. Now we have to also look at the landscaping piece of it. Fences placed, that's compost, fire pits, those are all considered landscaping. What happens is that we would use the nuisance code to deal with that. And that way, if somebody's dumping their grass clippings on it, now it's a nuisance code violation, we can go through that process and more quickly address it. Uh, we also have additional landscaping requirements, this section was not touched. We didn't make any changes to this from the current language to the proposed language, as it was initially established in two thousand seventeen. And then it was amended in twenty twenty-four. Um, the importance behind this is, uh, is, is purpose and scope. Which sets a minimum standard for, for preservation, installation and maintenance of landscape plantings. Including trees, hedges, wetlands, all within every district we have within the community. So going back to tree preservation, we have this in place. And we also have standards that are within, that are subdivision code, which is on the municipal side. Because this says city of lakes and parks, it also says trees and trails, unofficially. So that's just a big thing.
Can we add something to it?
Uh, any suggestions?
Uh, having a line of, so it does say like there should be a minimum quantity of trees. Can we add one of them being specifically a Minnesota native tree per the D N R?
We have language now.
Okay.
That it needs to be a native tree. If you're looking at going further on the restrictions. I would ask for consensus of the planning.
I was just looking earlier today, and I couldn't find anywhere where it said specifically Minnesota native, so.
It doesn't say Minnesota native, it just says native trees. They've gotta be trees that can survive. You can't plant a coconut tree in your front yard and say, hey, this is the one tree I need for my property. It's not gonna survive the winter, now it becomes a nuisance, now we've got another issue, so we want trees that can survive.
Yep. I just wasn't sure if like we could put it more specifically for our region and not like just any native tree, because like technically a cottonwood is a native tree to North America, but we don't really want cottonwoods in our areas.
We do have specific rules on that.
Okay.
And we ha- we have a contract with the landscape architect who reviews the type of plantings that are there.
Okay.
Um, as well as when we get applications to staff. We're not sure if that tree would be appropriate, especially underneath the current terms of the code. We'll reach out to the landscape architect, the D N R, the watershed, and, and other agencies to make sure that it's an appropriate thing.
Okay.
We could put language that's more specific in there. I do have faith that staff is gonna ask that, but one time we don't. Could be a thing. If there's a consensus to, to make that a more strict requirement, I'm more than happy to do the research on it.
Well, paragraph eleven does stipulate the trees you can't put in.
Yep.
But it doesn't say anything about specifically curbing two trees that we would want.
Right.
So, planting is prohibited. Plant species to be used for landscaping shall be acceptable to the city. So that's where the determination comes in at the staff level, where we would have a review of somebody who
Gotcha.
Knows more about trees if we don't, that are not considered a nuisance, so can't. We're not, we're not allowing people to plant ash trees right now because of E A B. Or Dutch trees because of Dutch elm. Um, undesirable species with thorns, cottonwood or cotton bearing, polers, ash trees. Proton Emerald Ash Bore, elm trees prone to Dutch elm disease and box elder. So we have that type of stuff in there to where we want to have hardy trees. We want trees to be healthy. Uh, with the developments that we have going on. Uh, the city, uh, city planner, uh, McCann and our landscape architect, I can tell you right now. I've spent many, many hours going through and looking at hundreds of thousands of trees at this point for help, and to make sure they meet landscaping plans. And I've been detailing that, and trees that need to be replaced are marked for replacement, and that's a follow-up that the city does do.
Okay.
I attest to that, there's some in my neighborhood.
I, I think, I think they enjoy getting out in the sun.
I had a question on, um, eight B six. Are, do you mean literally, uh, sod? I mean, so I would need to get permission if I were going to hydroseed, for example?
So, um, the part that's being specifically looked at is, uh, all disturbed land shall be restored with sod unless specifically approved otherwise. Yes. So sod is our minimum standard that you would need to do. If you had an alternate solution for replacing a disturbed area as a property owner or as a contractor. At that point, you would need to get permission to do that by requesting it through the Public Works. And the Public Works Director would be able to say, okay, you can do something different.
So it's not a, it's not a variance or or conditional use or anything like that? I just go to the Public Works and say, can I put hydroseed down?
Yep, it's, this is, this is what we say the standard should be, is the city should be sod. But you're saying there's an alternate solution that's gonna give you the, give the same result, that same end result. You present your case, and we've done it, uh, with the fiber companies, for example, and, uh, MediaCom uh, for their cable network that they have in town. There's been a variety between sod, uh, hydroseeding, black dirt and seed during the summer, especially during the hot periods. Sod isn't always the best option, because you put it down, it dies. Well, if you're doing your restoration work and sod's just gonna die, it's gonna be a waste of time and resources. And you say, hey, Public Works, you know, this just doesn't make sense to do. Here's an alternate solution that works for the type of season that we're in, or whatever the case may be.
If I wanted to go in with a more pollinator-friendly solution, I would go to Public Works.
Yep, it'd be Public Works.
Should we say that then, um, as specifically approved by Victoria Public Works?
When we leave it as identified as a city, what it does is it allows that decision to be controlled by the city manager. Of who would be the appropriate party to do it. And I think that's the intention of why those are generally written that way. And under a city manager, or, or under a manager council form of government that we have here in Victoria, I think it's most appropriate. We're trying to remove through other parts of the code where it said Public Works Director. Or it said the Director of Public Works, or it has language for positions that don't exist, or it says you can go to this person or this person. Um, those are various things that, that we have stripped out of the current language of the city code. Specifically for the reason that sometimes it can cause confusion, or policy decisions can be made. And not necessarily noted in the code that a policy decision was made and now creates confusion. But under, under current things, those requests go to the, go to Public Works, and generally Public Works will discuss it with the city engineer and figure out an ample solution.
Is that specific to development, development, or?
When, it's not specific. That example is specific to the sod piece, but anywhere in the code where it says a determination, the city, that's a staff determination.
Okay, but the sod-specific one is about development?
It, anybody could go, so if you, so let's say you're responsible for the tree in the boulevard, which some properties are. Well, let's say the tree's diseased, you gotta replace it, right? You rip everything out and you put a new tree in, right? Now you've ripped out all the, all the grass, and you gotta put sod in. Let's say you don't want to do sod, same thing. Or if a developer comes in and does it, or if a fiber company or telecommunications company, or whoever. This is the language for that restoration. This is what we want, but if you have a better solution, we're all ears. So it's, it just allows for that little bit of flexibility.
It says specifically in residential districts, do we want to open that up to all districts? You can just tell me no, it's fine.
I with the, the landscaping, um, the additional landscaping requirements has been working well for the city. Two thousand, like I said, two thousand seventeen it was put in, couple minor tweaks had to be done in twenty twenty-four. They're done, uh, we're able to do the inspections and have control, and we haven't really run into issues that have warned the amendment. The beauty of it is, if we do run into issues with commercial development, which is more likely to just take care of it. Then we can always do amendments, or we have other enforcement actions that can be done through the city's nuisance code. So, that's where a lot of this comes in. We, we have a whole nother way to do enforcement. We're just trying to set those high-level minimum standards of what we want to see.
Thank you.
Is that it Travis? So, the only last thing I have, uh, for tonight, Chair, is just talking about the next two meetings. We went through some high-level stuff. Um, and I do say that some of the discussion we'll fo- we'll be coming back to uh, during the next couple of meetings as we look at, uh, standards in business districts specifically, that's your performance standards. And then specifics, uh, performance standards for residential. So you have an overall arching with the all, and then more detailed as you get into those other areas. In addition to that, um, after that, we'll start looking at uses within districts. And those are the principal and the accessory uses. And then we'll start looking at parking standards, and we'll start looking at a lot of, a lot of fun, interesting stuff. The next five to seven meetings should be interesting. Um, I do want to point out, our staff's goal is to start bringing this back at every meeting. There are various things that can come up between meetings which may cause delay. But that is our intention, is to keep things moving as best we can. So, um, we do, I, we do have a full draft, um, with a ton of notes on it. Of what we're using as the basis for what we're bringing to the planning commission. And any planning commissioner, I'd like to, to view future stuff. We're more than happy to present that. Not all of it has been fini- has got the final discussion of staff on it. But if there's questions or if there's input or anything like that, more than happy to set up and, set up anytime you'd like to go through it.
Good, thank you. Anything further, Commissioners? All right, that concludes our discussion items for tonight. Thank you for your patience. Any miscellaneous items from staff other than the items you just mentioned?
Not that I can think of at this time.
Okay, thanks Travis. Commissioners, any miscellaneous? Okay, thanks Travis. Commissioners, any miscellaneous? Very good. Um, two things for me, back to the, to the, um, draft standards that we just reviewed. I, first of all, I shared Bob's concerns that sometimes it wasn't clear what we were talking about, which district we were in. If it was, you know, or, or which subdivision, if it's residential, commercial business. It would help me a lot if we could figure out a way to make that crystal clear. Secondly, I, it would help me too if we could find a better way. We've all taken the time to read these things in advance. Um, this, this felt painstaking to me and there's got to be a better way to do this, so maybe offline. Um, Travis, you and Brian and I can talk about how we might streamline this process, get the input that we're here to give you. Um, and yet make it easier for you as well to not have to go through in, in detail. So we'll do that. Um, with that, there are no more items this evening. Um, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, multiple motions. I'll take it we have a second. Um, so we have a motion, um, and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks Travis. Nice work, man.